All right. For everyone out there, we're holding off for a couple of minutes waiting for one of our planning board members to join us. Matt Siegel, who was going to be a couple of minutes late. And then we'll start the meeting. And if he's not here in a couple of minutes, we'll just start and then we'll invite him in after after that, if that's okay. Well, see, look who's joining us, Drew. Hello, Cabot.
That one of those.
You figured it out.
You actually get to see people's faces on Zoom. It's quite nice.
Yeah, right. That's a good point. Usually you can't. You don't even know who you're talking to.
I don't know who that was. All right. And I'm admitting eagle right now.
Yay.
All right. Good deal.
Hello. Hello, sir.
Hello, Matt. How are you?
Fine. Thank you.
Everyone able to speak or unmute themselves if they need to? Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Good. Thank you. Hello.
All right. And maybe I'll start this meeting just to start before we do this formally. Yeah, you know, I know there's a lot of I've gotten some comments from the public on this application already. So I just want to put it out there already that this is not the a meeting for public comment. This under the in the site plan review ordinance section, there's a section two procedures. This is number two. This is where applicants are encouraged to meet in a pre application conference with the planning board prior to formal submission. So once we get through this and there's a formal submission and a formal application of the planning board, that's when the public comment will be taken. And well, you know, I think everyone understands it's a little challenging sometimes to get public comments during this. You know, pandemic, we're meeting on Zoom. We will encourage people to submit public comments in writing ahead of time. And we'll put that we'll make all those comments available on our website as part of that. As this thing moves forward, just want to share that with everyone. Again, I know people have sent me comments and people really wanted to be able to speak, talk to this proposal. But again, I've said to them, this is not the the place for that. There will be a time and a place for public comment. And that is during the public hearing process and we are not there yet. So with that said, Rosie, I guess I'll hand it over to you. And again, this is a pre application meeting. Just start the meeting and you can also take public comments. For non agenda items, I think it's appropriate. Outside of that, we probably won't have any tonight, obviously. And then we'll go through the agenda, which is just a site plan review pre app meeting with Lyman Morse. And then at the end, we'll future meetings moving forward. There you go.
Okay, thank you, Jeremy. Good evening, everybody. Almost evening. And welcome to the 15th of October Camden Planning Board Meeting. As usual, the first thing I'm going to ask is if there are any non agenda items that anybody needs to speak to. Not seeing anybody saying anything. No. Okay, I hope my internet connection is okay.
Yours is fine. Yours is fine. There is someone's out there that seems something's going on in the background. I don't know if everyone else can hear that.
Yeah.
Maybe I would ask that if you're not speaking, maybe go to mute. Just let us try it that way. And if you want to speak, just unmute yourself and pipe in. But let's go that way route for now.
Okay, thank you, Jeremy. So that being said, I think we're ready to move on to the business of the day. And the end agenda items, which is a pre application meeting for the Lyman Morse Project on Camden Harbor. And I guess I'll hand it over to the applicants. I'm not sure who's going to speak on your behalf, but have at it. All right. Thanks, Drew. Sold yours.
Thanks, Rosie. Yeah, so this is this is exciting for us in a lot of ways. Essentially, what we're submitting is the proposal for rebuilding what the fire took out. And so, yeah, so we've worked with the architects, Will and the team here. And we've come up with this plan to submit to you guys to review. So essentially what we're doing is we're creating new space for the boatyard in terms of on the on the backside of the front side buildings there on the water side buildings. Ending a building down, not all the boats boatyard, not office space, but workspace for rig shop. Carpenters, mechanics, electronic shop will go in there, which has all been turned upside down just because of the smoke damage from the fire. So currently, we're operating out of trailers. We're trying to get these back, these guys back to some normalcy as kind of as soon as we can. And this is kind of our proposal. So on the front side towards the water side, we've got similar amenities that we're provide that we've provided this, you know, kind of pre pandemic. But there's various buildings there. The center will be the core of LM. And what we've done there is try to tie the our offices that used to be on the corner into the center of the workspace building so that we can have better communication flow. I never liked how that was separated. So I really like this plan because we get to bring every all the whole team together. And I think the communication pass will be much better. We do. Yeah, we've got various other uses there. We've got the restaurant coming back there. And then we got the distillery guys, Blue Baron, coming back into the other buildings. And and we've got the brokerage offices going back in there. So, yeah, so this is our proposal. And I kind of like all that Will kind of speak to the various descriptions and things like that, but happy to answer any questions.
I would Will, before you go, maybe I'd like to just mention if there is and just because there is a require there's a process for a waiver of submission requirements. And I'm not sure you at all need any of that kind of waiver, but if you did today would be a good, good time to express that desire. I, as I understand, you don't need any side of waivers from submittal requirements.
No, we've gone through the the submittal requirements and don't see, don't see any difficulties or need for waivers. I mean, there's definitely going to be some things that aren't applicable throughout the, you know, approval criteria, but I don't, there's no, no need for waivers.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
All right, thanks. So Jeremy, is it okay if I share my screen?
Absolutely.
Okay. All right. Hopefully, everybody is now seeing the aerial photograph. And I just wanted to put this up quickly to to make sure everybody understood that we're talking about this area right here. The large building is building one, which is their main boat building shop down on the inner harbor. And that building is going to remain. Everything else will be taken down, all these small buildings along the front. And the ones attached at the end that all had the smoke damage, along with the Quonset hut back here and this building here. So those are all going to be replaced. I'll, we created a demolition plan because we're in the process of having a hazardous materials study done in order to prepare for the demolition. All the buildings, everybody seeing this plan now with the pink buildings or red or whatever color that is. Those are the buildings that are going to all be removed, just to make sure that that's clear for everybody. And here is a site plan showing you the both the existing footprints. So here's building one. The heavy brown dash line are footprints of the existing buildings. And then the red infilled with a gray are the footprints of the new buildings. And as Drew was mentioning, there's going to be this kind of five clusters here. Starting at the south end is going to be the restaurant building. And then there'll be an open space where you'll be able to see from the water parts of building one. And then the next cluster will have the distillery and their boat lounge. This is the major Lyman Morse connector that Drew was talking about that that makes their office space and all their staff and management connected to building one and then also the new boat space here. Which is going to now put them central to all the activity rather than kind of stuffed in the front without much connectivity. And then beyond that, this space here has some lounge space and possible store retail space, similar to what they have there now. And then there's another open space. And then another building section here, Drew, what was in this last section again?
Unmute.
Yeah, so right now that's open, but what that serves is kind of the that so that'll be the entrance for the public walkway, which we're opening up. So we want to, we want to kind of make this entrance into the harbor walk there. So that's what that building will serve.
Yeah, that dash line represents, so this building is a two story building. And that dash line represents an opening on the first floor that is completely open from this portion of the yard. That would bring you into this courtyard, open space here. This is all boardwalk, so it's going to continue to be a timber framed boardwalk to give a similar look to what's there now. And that connects everything along the front. This portion of their property only has frontage on C Street right here with this access into the property. And so that's going to remain. All the new buildings are 24 feet or less. Meeting the requirements, the ordinance, and everything is set back from the harbor line, the 15 foot or more that's required. I'm going to quickly go to the perspectives. So this is an overview is if you are on the opposite side of the harbor looking back across. And again, here's building one here. And this is the new restaurant building. This is a two story building. And these two gable structures are only right there on the end. So there isn't a roof up there. That's an open roof deck. Then we've got an opening between buildings in the courtyard and a bunch of sawtooth roofs that they tried to match some of the old historic photos that showed this as being a salt warp and a lot of smaller type buildings. So in order to keep the massing down, I think Greensboro has done a good job with breaking all of these up and kind of adding some interest to it. The next set is the distillery here, then the lounge space. This is Lyman Morse's offices. These buildings had, what was that, the additional lounge and there was a retail space there.
Yeah, that that's actually where so we have office space currently. And that's going to take up, there'll be a lot of crew captain use space essentially is what we're looking at.
So I'm going to go through the rest of the perspectives, but they're basically zooming in on different portions of this. So this is starting down at the north end. And this is the building that actually has a walkway going through it. The perspective, the view on this makes it look like these roofs are taller than this one, but it really isn't. This is all 24 feet high. This building in the back is mast, storage and more boat building and workspace than an open courtyard again. I want to just keep going through these. You can kind of see. And again, the along the frontage is boardwalk space that we're hoping to get, you know, more public in and open it up. And, you know, make the whole thing feel welcome along the the frontage of this entire inner harbor portion of the boatyard. That's as we continue down heading from north to south. And then this is the restaurant. I'm going to, so you can see that this is just a gable end piece at the end, which is open air. And a second roof deck up in that area. This is the building that will house the restaurant. This is at the south end. So this is existing building one and the restaurant building here and then looking out to the harbor. So the travel left would be over in this area on the other side. And then just a little bit different view heading back from south to north.
I think something to take note there a little bit, right, Will, is that this this boardwalk increases in size, which we really like. So it'll be a lot more, you know, easier access for all the public to come down through there. And and that's important for us to make it a lot easier to come walk down through there.
Yeah, right now there's a couple of the buildings that kind of jut out and really narrow up the boardwalk and and make it a little congested as you come across. So this is going to definitely open it up. And that area on this perspective, that's all shown in white. Right now, we're planning to have that continue to be boardwalk. Out at the outer edge of it, at the harbor line, there's a seawall there. Part of it's granite. Most of it is sheet pile with a concrete cap and boardwalk built over the top of it. And so we're going to continue to do the same kind of look there. So from the building face to the outer seawall will again be boardwalk with grade underneath it. That entire boardwalk right now is around nine elevation, nine and a half. This area has a flood elevation of 10. So the first floor of these buildings need to be at 11. So the entire floor elevation and boardwalk elevation is coming up about a foot and a half. Drew, unless you've got something else to add, I think getting comments and answering questions would be would be good at this point.
Yeah, I think the only thing to comment on is, you know, a lot of what we're doing here is I think this will be a common question for from a lot of people is, you know, this is all part of our our ideas around how a boatyard needs to interact with the community. So a lot of what you're seeing here is the amenities we need to provide in this day and age for boatyards. So there's a, you know, it used to be the thinking that boatyards were very, you know, industrial space where you, you know, that's all you did, right? What's happened, though, of course, is up and down this coast, we have, you know, boatyards that provide more amenities, lounges, crew captain, office desks, you know, things like that. Obviously washer dryers goes without saying, and we want to provide that. So the whole goal here is is a lot about connecting the boatyard to the water and to the town. And we've, and this is what kind of why we're doing what we're doing here. The more boats that enjoy staying here, eating in town, eating at the restaurants here, like the rum line and like the distillery when it was open. It it created this really great energy for us and it didn't have that before. So this, this is recreating that. It's a, you know, it's different because the other stuff is just old, really awful buildings that are smoke damaged. But this is all about creating connection to the boaters that arrive here. And what happens is if they stay here and on the docks for a little longer, we typically then start talking to them about storing the boats. Go in and buy a house in town. That's happened a lot lately. But it just it feeds more into the boatyard and and frankly, to the town. But for now, you know, our goal is to feed that boatyard. So we want more service work and keep our guys, our whole crew cranking through the winter. So that's, that's kind of the plan here. And that's, yeah, that's it from me and.
Can I just add one thing? I think there's been some concern in the public that, you know, I don't think people knew, and I'm just throwing this out there because I think it's important. I think people saw the images because they, you know, it's a public document and it was in the in the Penn Bay Pilot at least. I think there was some concern that these were going to be condos. And I just want you to kind of, you know, just dispel that that myth that these are not condos. You know, this is replacing the uses you have and making those uses better and more in line with what you just discussed. And there are no condos proposed as part of this project.
No, I think we all know that's a hot topic. No, let's, we can put that to rest. There are no condos in this. That's official.
Thank you, Drew.
Okay, I think if if presentation's complete and everything's clear, it's time to ask the board if there's any questions from them about this. Anybody?
This is Ethan. I do have a couple of questions. Yeah. First off, I'm curious whether you've, I mean, I know you mentioned the 11 foot height due to the flood plain. How much have you considered sea level rise that we can anticipate the next 10 to 20 years? Jeremy, you I see your hand is up.
Yeah, I think let me maybe start this and then Will and Drew can pipe in after. This is an exact conversation that we had the other day when then we when we discussed this project and kind of a pre code planning review session. I asked the same question, Ethan, and unfortunately, what we have is we have a zoning ordinance that has a maximum building height that does not facilitate them doing, I think, what you're suggesting is actually build this for that projected sea level rise out 75 years, which they're projecting at potentially four feet. You know, I think they would probably contemplate and look at that. The unfortunate thing is our zoning ordinance does not would not facilitate that at the present time due to height restrictions. And that is something that I am going to be working on, you know, over the course of the next year, two years, hopefully before that, two years, certainly the next year is looking at building height. And people are concerned about building height because they don't want the view to change from, you know, where they're at. However, you know, we really have to think, you know, big and understand the the real issues that we're facing when it comes to sea level rise. I mean, whether or not you agree with climate change, what it's caused by, sea levels are rising. And that's something the town is going to have to deal with up and down the coast. And, you know, at some point we'll get there, but I appreciate it, Ethan. I think it's a good point. And they they looked at it, you know, and we looked at it. Unfortunately, we can't get there under the current zoning ordinance.
Okay, and so just curiously, if we talk about elevating the floor, so to speak, so that the base is is higher. So instead of bringing it up to 11, you know, 11 feet, you bring it up to 15 feet and just start there. Does that change the the calculation at all?
Right. Even is. Yeah, I mean, right now, the the issue for us, Ethan, is that the ordinance says that our building height is measured from the lowest floor elevation allowed by the floodplain ordinance, which is 11. So 11 is our starting point. We can only.
Regardless. Okay.
Only go 24 feet up to 11. I mean, from 11 up 24 feet. So any more that we raise it, we would lose the second floor of of the buildings. It's hard to have two decent stories.
Right. I mean, I just, it, you know, again, and I appreciate that. And I appreciate that you've looked into this. It's I imagine this is not an inexpensive project. And if you could, you would account for, you know, the 75 year out projections. So I just, I wonder if there what what mechanism, Jeremy, there might be, whether it's, I know, I know that variances are often very contentious and not often given. I'm just curious again, whether that's something that's been considered. It seems, it seems like an issue if you're putting this much investment into these buildings right on the shore here to to put something right smack dab in the middle of the floodplain or the or the sea level rises we're expecting.
Yeah, I I think it's a great point, Ethan, and that's exactly, I mean, that's, I think, word for word came out of my mouth the other day. And, you know, the variance is an interesting one. And, you know, you got to prove that there's no reasonable economic, you know, return on a on an issue if you're seeking a variance. And that's a really good question. If you look at it over the course of time and sea level rise, who knows? I mean, maybe some lawyers could get you there. I don't know. But it is something we're going to look at. I mean, I'd like to look at floodplain and the, you know, the finished floor elevation moving forward. Because that could, if you, you know, start above that one foot above the base flood elevation, people's insurance rates could start coming down if you get to two feet above base flood elevation in your ordinance. And that's, that can be big for for communities from a flood insurance perspective. But again, we didn't, we can't get there yet because of the height issues.
Yeah. And so I guess I'll just throw that out there is that to the extent that our zoning ordinances do not account for sea level rise and and that sort of thing, they really do need to be addressed to speed.
I will work on that forthwith. How's that?
Sounds good.
Thank you, Ethan.
Can I ask one more? Yeah, I just had one more question. It's a different one. But um, as far as the buildings, there's a building one is staying, it sounds. And then as far as the remaining buildings, is the the basic claim that they are all either fire or smoke damaged? I mean, to the extent that they're, they're essentially not salvageable. I know they're not necessarily great buildings. I'm just curious as to the condition of, you know, whether they're all like, you know, if it's all sort of like, you know, an insurance company will see a car that's in an accident and say, oh, well, it's a total loss, but it's really not. I'm just curious what your perspective is on that.
Yeah, the buildings that were associated with a fire certainly are in, you know, we essentially, I think the town of Camden pulled our occupancy permit. So we're not allowed back in those. So those ones are, you know, the condemned, I guess. I don't actually know what the occupancy, essentially, that's what it means until they're either pulled down or rehabbed. But there's like multiple floors, multiple ceilings, multiple walls. I mean, it's just cobbled together over the years. So the ones associated, you know, in that area were, you know, damaged beyond our expectation. So.
Pretty much each and every building you're proposing to replace? Or are there some that are being swept in with that?
Yeah, the ones.
I just put demolition plan back up. And so the ones that are all kind of connected around building one are are definitely the buildings that have been damaged and they're not allowed to use anymore. So and those buildings were not a great construction anyway, so it would make no sense to try to put any money into those. Yes. This building here, though, I don't think really was impacted that much by the fire. But this Quonset hut right here is, that needs to go. And Drew, I mean, in this building is not that functional either. So.
No, that's the, that's where we store the rigs and, you know, any, any boatyard needs a better rig shop than what we've got. You know, we've, you know, you go anywhere else in the rig shop. This is not adequate. So that's, that's why we're encompassing the the plan to reshape the rig shop.
Gotcha. Thank you.
And we'll add from a code perspective and maybe just echo that there was nothing compliant if you go through that building. I mean, the separations from one area to another area where, I mean, this building, like Drew said, was kind of hodgepodge together over time. And it is a trying to rehab that facility really not cost effective, Ethan. It's really not. I mean, the smoke and the, you know, the fire damage just continued from one area all the way to the other area into the building because there were not those fire separations and the like that are required under today's codes.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Ethan. Is there anybody else on the planning board who?
I have a couple of questions.
Go for it, Mark.
First of all, how how does our how does our new demolition ordinance affect this?
It does not. This is not a building that is in a historic district. It is not a standalone historic registered historic property. So it does not affect it, Mark.
Okay.
If you remember, that that ordinance was pretty specific. We focused on areas that were either existing historic districts, landmarks, or properties that were or districts that were under review by the National Park Service. And I don't believe this is areas under review by the National Park Service for inclusion in a national historic district. Pretty certain.
The other question was it looks like you're increasing the building size. And how much is that increase?
Oh, footprint wise?
Footprint, yes. Footprint, yes.
There is a slight footprint increase. I have that somewhere, actually. But it's, it's, I mean, there's no lot coverage restriction. So, I mean, and there's no restriction on building footprint on this lot. So it's certainly not an issue with regards to the ordinance. It'll take me a second, Mark. I have to look that up and find.
Well, that's all right.
I think we'll have that, Will, you'll include that on the app, on the plan when it comes in.
Yeah, I can certainly include what the difference is between existing and proposed.
Great, that'd be, that'd be nice.
Thank you. Any, is that any other questions, Mark?
That's it for me.
Okay, thank you. Any other planning board members who have questions?
Good. Thank you for asking.
Nothing from Matt, nothing from Jeff. I guess just one of, one of my questions would have been just generally, it seems like in shoreline zoning, it seems like the mass of the buildings is moving closer to the water overall, just from a very brief look at the plan where you had the old outline on there. Is that, I know you've got one bit that's further forward, right? There's one little.
There are pieces that are closer, but in this zone, the setback, Rosie, is 15 feet from the harbor line, which is the bulkhead.
Yeah.
So, and, and the boardwalk would be considered a structure anyway, so it's
Gotcha, okay.
It's really all already structured.
Yeah, okay, that's fine. That was
And may, Rosie, did you comment maybe on that piece? Understand, I appreciate the shoreline zone comment. Understand that DEP, as well as our ordinance, when you look at the state's minimum mandatory shoreline zoning guidance and guidelines, they look at commercial, built-up industrial areas along in the shoreline zone differently than they look at, you know, residential zones, rural areas. The standards are very different. The state understands that waterfronts that are developed with industry, they need, we need that to thrive as, as a, you know, the state's economy, and that's part of what our, you know, main is, is working waterfronts. So, you know, you do have commercial and industrial areas along waterfronts and in zoning ordinance, fully allowed under shoreline zoning that are much less strict than if you were on a vacant lot out on McGunt's Hook Lake in the shoreline zone.
But Jeremy, in compliance with the shoreline, the boardwalk's not being, Will, as you were saying, the boardwalk's not being extended to the harbor.
We're just coming, I just want to confirm that. We're just coming up with the elevation.
We're just bringing the elevation up, correct. And we've actually had a pre-app meeting with the DEP with regards to what we need to do. And I've showed them these same plans that we're showing you guys tonight. And we're going to be submitting before our next planning board meeting, a permit by rule application, because this is already all developed and we're replacing what's there. And we're meeting the shoreline zoning rules, and it's all, like I said, all developed. The, the process is pretty simple with the EP. There's no involvement with the Army Corps because we're not doing anything in the harbor at all.
Thank you.
Okay, any, any other questions? Can I?
This is Ethan again, Rosie. Sorry, this is real quick. I do just have a suggestion. I know we're all pretty familiar with the, the, sort of the, the view of the, of the buildings as they exist, but it might be helpful in your application to include sort of a before and after type of layout.
Thanks, Ethan.
Just, just so that we would have it in front of us. Maybe a picture, photograph, or even a drawing of what's, what's in place right now, and then how it will look different than what we, what we, what you're proposing.
Okay, so like a view from the opposite side of the harbor.
Correct, yeah, yeah.
And Will, if it's not, if it's not a stretch, also the bird's eye. I mean, I know you have the rough lines in there, but I, even with my glasses, it would be really great to just clarify from the bird's eye from above, again, the previous structures with the overlays. I know there's the dotted line in there.
Yep.
And Will, maybe it's shading it a different color or something. I mean, I, I understand what Matt's saying. I think if you could just somehow make it a little more pronounced.
Yeah, that's where I'm going. Thank you.
Yeah, I messed with a bunch of different options. It's just, it gets really busy. But I can, I can work on creating maybe a separate plan that just has existing footprint and proposed footprint and see if I can come up with a way to make that, you know, very readable.
Yeah, and have everything else go away, Will.
Right, right.
Ethan, I think you asked that same question the last time you reviewed a Lyman Morse project on the water.
At least I'm consistent.
You are.
I think you're right, Jeremy, yeah.
Can I, can I ask one more question? I wonder if you, Will, if you could pull up, pull up the perspective views.
Absolutely.
Okay, so I'm really fully supportive of the functional aspects of this project. I think it's great what you're doing. I'm curious, I'm anticipating some of the hesitancy that may come from other people in the area about some of the aesthetics on this. And so I just wanted to determine what was driving some of that and looking at the, the central building here with, with the LM initial on. Does that have a roof on it?
It does not. So that, that gable in the front is a false gable. So the second floor, you know, it's a flat roof, and this is all false.
And what happens on that flat roof? Is that a public deck or private deck?
No, there isn't an occupied space there. It's, it's just an APDM roof with roof drains.
And then everything, that, that's a curtain wall of windows wrapping around underneath that.
Correct.
Okay, and, and that, I mean, I, I guess I'm not buying the traditional aspect of that. I don't see how putting a false gable on top of a curtain wall horizontal row of windows in any way reflects. I mean, I just wonder if you're going to do it, then do it, and don't bother with the false gable. I guess that, you know, that, that's, I'm, I'm just questioning how that integrates with the rest of it. I, I really buy the, the sore tooth and reflecting the other buildings are already there. I really appreciate the sensitivity that's gone into the thinking behind that. And, and then, but in the middle of those, there's this kind of central piece in the middle, and I can't quite see the connection between that and the buildings either side.
Yeah, okay.
And I'm thinking other people may have that question. And, and then at the other, if, if we were looking to the right of this perspective, which you can't see, there's the restaurant as well. I'm guessing you've also got a false gable on there as well, right? That's all that's doing. So again, I kind of like, why not just make it a box and enjoy it and it be a nice industrial structure? But that's just my personal preference for some kind of honesty in, in what's happening. I mean, overall, I think that's
Yeah, yeah, I could see that perspective. I think what we really didn't, we really wanted to look not so big-box store type feel. That would be my worst nightmare to, to feel like this was just this boxy, you know, industrial look. I think that's, that's probably why the architects did what they did is to try and blend that stuff and, you know.
I mean, to be honest, I mean, Drew, I'd, I'd, I'd push back on that a little. And I think what, one of the things that makes boatyards so wonderful is that they do have this boxy industrial nature. And I think apart from what I'd consider the slightly hokey fake gables, I think the architects have done really a rather lovely job of making that a very attractive box. And I'd never look at that and think that was a Walmart, you know.
It's funny, yeah, no, I see what you're saying. No, I mean, I don't, I didn't mean to say it was like that. But the, the, if you, like, so if you go to Thomaston, to the old Renaissance boatyard, and some of the buildings we have over there, they all have a lot of that gabled and feel. So that's, that's the tie-in, like, that's, right, that's kind of, that's, we're trying to get an ode to that old boatyard stuff.
Sure, sure. Okay, I mean, I just, I just like boxes that are well-done and well-proportioned. And I think you could just have a box and it might work better. That's purely, that is, that's, that's, there are going to be other people with lots of different opinions, so.
Well, I think you're right. You know, our, we also, we didn't want to make it too modern. I mean, there's some touch of modern in this. And I, you know, we were a little fearful that it would look too modern, I think, at that point. But, but you've got some good points.
It, it's a fine line. I think that's the, that's, that's where you're trying to figure out how to marry these, because you've got this building, looking at the view now, you've got this building on the left, which is just a whole curtain wall of glass, right? Which it, it's hard to buy that that's, you know, so therefore, what's traditional and what's modern there? You've got a very traditional kind of form with a very modern wall facing the harbor.
Right.
You know, and, and it's a very, this is a huge, and you're, you're, it's a, there's a lot of development for the size of the harbor. So whatever you do here is going to have a huge impact on the aesthetics of this harbor for a long time. So I understand why there's a lot of interest in this project. But I think that's all I need to say. Jeremy?
Rosie, I very much appreciate everything you said. I just want to remind everyone that we don't do design review. We have a little bit, the section in here talks about relationship of proposed building to the environment, neighboring buildings. We're not in one of the zones that we look at exterior stuff like that. But I think it's important to get that out and express that and let, let the applicant and Drew understand that, that, you know, that is a perspective. But I just want to remind everyone that's, we, we generally don't, can't go down this way, there's a row of, you know, this way of designing buildings or, you know, reviewing a design or, I just, I just think that's important and I appreciate what you said. And I think Drew does too, and I'm sure he'll take it to heart. But about mass and scale of the building, not about scale of the building, so.
Yeah, yeah.
As, as we move forward.
Thank you, Jeremy.
Yep.
So can I just follow up on Rosie's question? This is Ethan. Are you done, Rosie? Okay, we're talking about in that middle building, that's going to be the, the Lyman Morse offices, is that correct?
Yeah.
Yes?
Yes, yep.
And then, so when Rosie referred to the curtain wall of windows, that's fully enclosed, right?
There's space here, yes.
Yes, so those are like office spaces, that sort of thing.
Correct.
Okay, and then above that is the open roof?
Correct.
And, but that's not the restaurant. That's something else.
Restaurant, right.
Yeah, so, so what is the, what is, what is the use of the open roof above the offices? Is it just sort of another roof deck? Or is it just a, or is it just a flat roof that will not be used for anything? Yeah, right there.
Right, that's just the flat roof as far as, right, is there intent to have people up there, Drew? No, okay. Right, so the only one that has a roof deck, Ethan, is the restaurant.
Gotcha. I'm just wondering if you've considered a green roof or something like that for that, that structure?
Yeah, you know, we've looked at that stuff in the past. I don't think up there we'd probably do that. I, I know there may be some of that over near the restaurant, but I haven't really gotten there yet.
Because it certainly is a lot of surface area that could be, you know, maybe put to some use. I don't know. Anyway, that's just another thought.
Yeah.
Thank you. Am I, anybody else?
So, yeah, I have a question. I guess, Jeremy, hopefully you can help me with this on the standards.
Hold on, Mark, just let me preface this for a second. We're, we probably should not go down the road of reviewing standards, but, you know, as it applies to this project, if you have questions generally about a standard.
That's what this is.
Okay.
On the height.
Yep.
General height, maximum building or structural height, general height is 24 feet. But then it also says on lots of budding inner harbor, it's 32 feet. So what's, what's the discrepancy there and how is that interpreted?
Well, I'm going to have to ask you for some, I know we spent a fair amount on height on this.
I've got it right in front of me. So that section, Mark, that you're reading starts off by saying non-residential buildings of one story?
Right, that's it.
Used exclusively for construction, storage, repair of boats or ships. So the buildings in the back that are boat buildings and used for that purpose and are only one story could go to 32 feet. But the buildings that forward of that with the gables aren't one-story buildings, so they are restricted to 24.
Right, gotcha.
The reason why that we didn't do the buildings behind that up to 32 was in difference to the neighbors in the back. I mean, basically wanting to not, you know, make a big change there that's going to have a big impact on, on the people who are funding the properties.
Good, I, I think that's an important fact to note.
Yep.
Thank you. Anybody else? Matt Segal, Jeff Senders, do you guys have anything?
No, I'm good, Rosie. Thank you for asking.
All right.
Can I ask Jeannie if she's still on board with us? If, I know we're not taking public comment, I'm just curious, Jeannie, you're watching the YouTube, are there comments that are coming in?
There. I don't see any.
Perfect, thank you.
Oh, wait, I take that back. It came in a different part. Hold on.
Well, and I guess, Jeannie, is it relevant to something that, I mean, we really can't discuss and provide public comment on this project? Is that what it is? Or is it more procedural?
One has to do with traffic and quantity of parked cars.
Okay, yeah.
And wondering how they're going to control traffic.
Okay, that's fine. Yeah, that's something that we're not going to discuss tonight, but I appreciate that. And we'll just include that in, you know, as we move forward, so.
Jeremy, as you do get questions and comments, though, anything that you can share with us would be appreciated. We'd, we'd love the opportunity to address as much as we can in the application.
Oh, absolutely. Well, my plan will be, and I, you know, I think, people get frustrated a little bit, I think, about the Zoom process. But I think actually, it's, it actually can provide, I think, more, you know, upfront comment from, from the community, and it enables you as the, as the applicant to, you know, to take that more into consideration. So I'm going to admit, Mark Ratner, right now, he's a select board member, he's just to, to jump in, so I admitted him here. But I, I do think that, you know, what we will do, Will, is we're going to get, take public comment, and we'll provide all that comment to the board and we'll provide it to everyone. We'll have it available on the town's website, everybody's comments. And what we're going to do is we're just going to ask people to, you know, when we get to the public comment period, everyone will have had the opportunity to review the public comments, you know, ahead of time. And, you know, if people have additional comments that are, that vary from what they have already commented on in writing, then, you know, that's fine, but we're not going to reiterate everything in the meeting, because I think the public comment period using, at least getting written comments is, could be very constructive and for this process. So, that's what I have to say.
I have a, I have a question or just a comment. In the past, the board has not entertained any comments that come in as anonymous without being attributed to a person. So is that going to be the practice here too? A lot of emails come in with their username, which doesn't identify them. I'm just putting it out there.
Yeah, I think that's appropriate. I mean, I, you know, I think from my perspective, anonymous is a little odd for comments, and I think it's important. I mean, I've read some of the comments. I'm just going to throw this out there and that board, I don't want you guys to dive into the news and, you know, following public comments on social media on this, because, you know, you got to keep your focus on what's in front of you and what's submitted, and that's what you're reviewing. And if public comment comes in as part of the record, but that's public comment. But I would, I will say, I've read, read But I would, I will say, I've read, read some comments, um, already on, on this project. And most of those people don't live in this community, um, and it's that I've read. And that's concerning to me and I, and I, I just, you know, um, I, I just, we'll, we'll make public comments available, written to you folks. Um, and the board has already said they don't want anonymous comments. I think that's appropriate. And you guys can discuss that briefly if you want. I mean, that's been board policy. If you want to change it, that's fine. But I, I think, um, I think you should know who's, especially in a project like this, this is not a, this is not a neighborhood dispute. This is not a, you know, a housing issue. This is a site plan review that is a very open public process. And if people cannot state their name, um, in an open public process, that, that concerns me. Um, you know, especially understanding that there's a lot of boatyards, um, and other facilities in the region. Um, I'm just throwing that out there as another, just throwing that out there.
Well, I think that's an important point. I, I think, um, you, you know, when, when we do take public comments, we, we have to know their perspective and if they're residents and and I think that's important. But the other thing, uh, that, that I see that, that might need to be addressed is the capacities of the restaurants. It looks like, um, the, the restaurant facility is much larger than what has been there in the past. And I, I wonder if, if we need to address a increased use.
Well, so Mark, that's a very good point. And I will say what Will will be doing on this, on this, um, submittal, um, you know, he's going to be looking at parking because that's one of, parking and onsite vehicular traffic and all the like is one of the standards that you review. Um, you review that. The code office and myself will review, um, uses of the property and, and determine what type of parking is required based on the proposed uses. We understand that there are existing square footage already provided on the site for certain uses. And if they're going to propose additional use, additional square footage for certain uses, they're going to need to, need to provide adequate parking and that, that is what, that, that is a standard. Um, that will be reviewed by myself and the code officer once we have one. Um, so we'll, we'll, you know, we'll review that, Mark, and that will certainly show on the, on a table, a development table or a standard table that is on the plan. Um, and Will, I think, understands this. You know, we'll have existing uses and we'll kind of detail what those uses are and what the parking requirements are and how they meet that. And then any proposed uses that are, or at least expanded uses will show the same thing. Um, so we'll, we'll, we'll be able to provide that for you, Mark. No problem.
Good.
Yep. Is that correct, Will?
Absolutely. Yep.
Great. Thank you.
Just as a point of procedure, can only Camden residents comment on projects before the board?
Um, that's a good question. I don't believe the, um, does anything to that effect. Um,
You've never limited, you've never limited your comments to citizens only, but it's up to you to take them into consideration, um, as you want.
I think we'll just receive as much comment as comes in. I mean, the comments are going to come in and you guys could, um, you know, you, you'll take it for what it is and, and, and move on. I mean.
And, and I guess, would we, would we have any way of knowing if they were Camden residents or from other municipalities if we're getting, I mean, I guess if they've got their names, but will we also know whether that's where they're from? And should that, should that influence the weight that we might give to their concerns?
When you read the, the public hearing procedure, you ask the people to state their names and where the, and their address. That's part of the public hearing procedure.
Okay. So with that said, Rosie, with that said, and since we're under this Zoom process, um, is part of the public notice and is part of the request for people to, you know, be engaged in this process to provide public comment, we will add that language, what Jeannie just said, to, um, you know, how you provide comment to the public. So, or.
Yeah, I was going to say, I was going to say that would be great if we could head that off, you know, and if we're receiving, if we're receiving email public comment and somebody sends in something, I mean, as a board, I generally would like to consider it regardless of where they're from. Um, but if they didn't, just didn't include something like their address, maybe if there's a follow-up or you could say, you know, this comment cannot be included until you provide your name and address. I wouldn't be opposed to that either. Maybe creating a lot of extra work. I don't know.
No, I think it's appropriate. I mean, this gets into a weird thing because, again, um, you know, Lyman Morse is obviously making a significant investment in Camden. They are not the only boatyard. They are not the only, um, you know, facility in this mid-coast region. So, you know, we all, we always talk about, is there a conflict of interest amongst the board members, um, on, on reviewing a project? But do we talk about, and I'm just, I'm mentioning this because I think it's important from a policy perspective. Do we, um, do we ask that question from people who submit comments? Um, you know, and if you're going to take comments from people in Belfast or people, you know, in another harbor, uh, another community that may have connections to another marine facility? And are they going to try to sway your vote, one, or your, your review, one way or the other, based on what they have going on and, you know, where they work or, or what their facility is? I mean, I, I just think it's a, it's an interesting thing. Um, and I, I just, I think trying to get as much information from the, uh, commenter is, that we can is appropriate. And.
Yeah, can I just say?
I was going to say, just whenever that we're reviewing the review, when you review this, you're reviewing it on the approval criteria. And that's where your review comes from. And if comments come in and it, it makes you think another way about, about the proposal or about a certain aspect of the proposal based on the approval criteria, then, then that's appropriate. But, um, you know, remember it's, it's the approval criteria that drives you. You know, I have heard a lot of people already saying that this is going to change Camden forever and you can't vote for it. Well, that's not a standard. That is not an approval criteria. Um, and you've got to keep it within the approval criteria.
Yes, thank you. Um, I'm, I'm also aware that it may, you know, I'm just interested, does a balance change if we've got an online submittal process? Usually people have to show up in person if they want to make a comment or send a letter ahead of time. And, and they agree, given that we ask people where they're from for the record, I think we should be doing that.
Okay. So that's, that, that sounds consistent with your existing policy. Um, and since we're scheduled, trying to schedule this out and we're going to talk about future meetings, since we're scheduling this, I think, like November 19th, um, for, you know, approval criteria and public hearing and all that. I think we'll have ample time to try to, um, address your concerns about who's commenting and the ability for people to appropriately and adequately comment on the project. Um, I think we'll, we'll try to.
Thank you.
I think it could work out well.
Yes.
Well, I, I think maybe the word there might be that they're standing, um, on the project, you know, whether they're, you, you know, all comments are welcome, but, you know, where are you from and what is your standing? How does this impact?
Yeah, I think that's important.
Traditionally, our project similar to this would be, to me, uh, the residents of Camden and the business owners are who we are listening to as far as public comment goes. Uh, everything else is almost very tertiary and background and shouldn't be swaying our votes uh, in any way. So to me, I would rather just listen to the taxpayers and the voters of Camden, but also the business owners. The business owners have traditionally been neglected in this process. And I would like to hear their voice and it's always appreci-, I always like hearing their voice on this project.
We, we found our caller. I always like hearing Jeff's voice too, but Jeff, you're the one creating the noise, if you didn't know.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Sorry. I'll mute again.
Great. Mark, did you want to say anything?
You're speaking, you're not speaking to me, are you?
Yeah, no.
Mark Ratner.
Yeah, sorry. I had a, an previous meeting and sorry I was late to this. I just have to agree with, uh, Mark that, um, you need to have standing, uh, for your comments to be taken as part of the decision-making process. And I agree, I think the business owners in town have standing and the residents do. But, you know, both people up and down the coast, you know, interested to hear what they have to say, but they have no, I don't think they have a legal standing in this issue. You know, it's the people of Camden that really have the, the ability to comment that we need to listen to.
Okay, fair. We'll, we'll, we'll make sure that is, um, is included in our request for comments from the public. Okay?
Thank you. And, and I think, and I think the last thing to say is that, you know, um, certainly as a chair, I would encourage comments from people because, you know, we really want to know. And I think Lyman Morse wants to know too, you know, how people feel about this and what their concerns would be. And having those in ahead of time allows us to look at those and address them if they're appropriate. Um, so please don't hesitate to get in touch and let us know what you think ahead of the next meeting.
Jeremy, I wonder if, if it would be, um, appropriate to put an agenda item on the meeting that's on the 29th of this month about receiving testimony in this public hearing? I think as long as it's on the agenda, you can discuss it and then you can go over some final, um.
Yeah.
A final proposal.
That's a good point. Um, at least, uh, you know, uh, request, or how to handle public comment. I think that's good. And I will chat with the town attorney on Monday about that and how best to facilitate it. I know, you know, Bill works, um, for the town of, town of Camden, as well as the city of Belfast. And he and I had a great conversation, um, about public comment in these types of meetings. We both thought, um, today we had the conversation, we both thought that this was going to be, uh, you know, challenging, navigating, um, public comment during, you know, um, kind of traditional procedures like this. I mean, you guys are voting on a project. Um, but what he has found in Belfast, and they've obviously got a pretty darn big project going on, um, that public comment, um, actually kind of almost increased and is kind of easier, um, to follow. And, and everyone could see the public comment a lot easier, uh, because it was written and requested with written comment ahead of time. Um, and, and I, I think that in and of itself, um, you know, is, is a big plus as opposed to you guys hearing public comment at the meeting. Um, and then you got to decide, you know, so I, I think that, I think we can find a good, um, means to, to get to good public comment. And, um, in a, in a good way, so.
Yeah, and that's, that's, that's an interesting thing though, because that, that project in Belfast that you vaguely referred to, that I think we all know about, um, has a far-reaching impact, um, you know, as far as the water, um, down to Islesborough and, and even, even down river and down into Camden and stuff. So, um, whether this project would qualify for that, I'm not really clear. And that, and that's again, where, so my position is again, as long as we know where the comments are coming from, I think we can appropriately weigh them. I wouldn't say I would want to just restrict them. Um, I, I'm a little bit more open-minded about that.
That's a fair comment. I will say, Ethan, this is a little different because this project does not fall under site law, which is a main DEP permitting, um, you know.
Well, I recognize that it's different. Absolutely.
It's a different thing.
I think that's what I said, is that it's different.
Yeah, site law, site law requires, you know, if you're, if you're impacting multiple jurisdictions with your development, it, you get that broader, you get that broader as well as, because it's a site law project, you get a much broader public comment period. And public comment can come in from all, all kinds of different, um, places. Um, this project is our public comment and our public hearing procedures based on our ordinance only, not on a much broader DEP site, site permitting project. I'm just sharing with you, but.
Right, no, and I wasn't really suggesting that it was. Uh, but my, my question, my point was actually that, you know, if, if someone was a, uh, regular coastal cruiser up and down the coast or, or a sailor that sails up every year from Florida and, um, wanted to comment saying that they really would welcome this kind of project and that the upgrades and everything that they see, or they would say, boy, you know, I'd much rather go to Belfast because they have the industrial steel buildings that sit right there on the harbor and it looks, looks like a traditional building. You know, that sort of thing. I mean, I mean, again, I wouldn't, I wouldn't necessarily weigh it as like I would a Camden resident who says, I don't want to, you know, see this building in front of my house. Um, but I would, I would be happy to consider virtually almost any comment as long as it's, you know, relevant to the project. That's, that's sort of my perspective, as long as I know where it's coming from. I agree a hundred percent on the, on the anonymous, you know, the anonymous comments. We don't know the motivation or whatever. That's a whole different thing. But if we get a comment from Belfast, we'd have a pretty good idea that, there, you know, at least that there might be something else going on.
Mm-hmm. Understood. Good, good conversation.
Okay. Anything else? Anybody looking good?
Hey.
All right.
Thank you, Will and Drew. Um, and thanks, Alyssa and Josh. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, much appreciated.
Thank you guys.
I think we need to just finalize some future meeting dates and then we'll be good.
Um, you also need to talk about sidewalk and public hearing. That should be part of when the applicants are involved.
Right. Are you guys still here?
Yes.
Okay. Great. Um, so maybe we'll jump back to that. We were initially hoping to do a site plan and public hearing and, under approval criteria on November 19th. Um, and, you know, it may extend, who knows what the public comment's going to be, you know, and this is a Zoom process. So it may extend to the following meeting, but, um, does that work with everyone? Um, you know, and all these procedures for the scheduling is laid out in the zoning ordinance, um, or in the site plan review section. Um, and we'll, we'll obviously stay in compliance with, with the procedures on that, but does that work the 19th? I mean, some projects go through the project, you guys explain it, the process, you explain the project and then we schedule another, a public hearing at a later date. I mean, to me, it seems like, you know, we ought to probably schedule the site plan review and the public hearing. And if we need to continue it at that point, we continue it. Um, but that's my perspective. Anybody have any comments on that?
Do we, do we have a public hearing for the Colcord Avenue project on the 19th?
No, that's the 5th.
Well, we're still waiting to see. I have not heard from him, Mr. McMillan. So that's proposed for the 5th. And the, um, the Hedstrom and the Fox Hill, um, project, that's actually not the 22nd. That's going to be October 29th. Um, so.
The thing, it, Thanksgiving is the next Thursday after the meeting on the 19th.
Yeah.
Would Will be ready by the 12th to submit for the 12th? Would that work for you guys to meet two weeks in a row?
I mean, that, that would be really tight. We have quite a bit of stuff that we want to finalize. And so for the 19th, the, the submission date's the 4th. So that gives us, you know.
Weeks.
Three weeks.
19th for me.
What's that, Mark?
19th works for me.
Does, does anyone feel like there's a site visit needed on this?
Well, that was going to be my next question.
I honestly think for a project this size, um, we probably, given the level of public interest as well, I mean, even though much of it is a rebuild on the same, in the same area, it probably would behoove us to do a site visit. I mean, how does the rest of the board feel about that?
I tend to agree with you, Rosie. Um, you, you know, I, I think most of us are, are very, very familiar with the property, but based on the scope and the size of this project, it's probably a good idea.
Okay, I'm kind of seeing some nodding from Matt. Yeah.
All right. All right then. So, um, just so you know, we're looking at October 29th for a public hearing on the Tom Hedstrom project or Hedstrom site. And Fox Hill, that's a quick, that's an expansion of their beds from eight to 12. They're not doing any changes to the site. They're not proposing any changes. Um, this is just when we did the, you know, the, this was before I got here, but when we facilitated Fox Hill to do what they did, um, they need to do a little expansion. Again, no building, just using four new bedrooms. Um, so they're going from eight to 12. That's on the 29th along with Hedstrom. And then we got McMillan hopefully on the 5th. And then, uh, this project on the 19th, which may be carried over to December 3rd. So is there a time, a date that would work for everyone to do a site plan or a site walk at Lyman Morse? And, you know, morning, some morning, and I, I think we should obviously provide adequate, uh, time and notice to the public that this is happening.
About the morning of the 19th.
The morning of the meeting?
Yes. Yes.
Fine by me.
I'm fine with that.
It works for me. Drew, are you okay with that?
Yeah, yeah, whatever works for everybody else. Yeah, we'll make it work.
Okay.
I, I have no objection to that, as long as it's after, as long as it's after nine o'clock, like around nine o'clock, not earlier.
Jeannie, what were you going to say?
That um, previously you wanted to leave time for the applicant to adjust to any of concerns that might, you might find while you're on the site. That wouldn't.
Yeah, I hear that and I think that's probably uh, appropriate. I think especially in like a Tom Hedstrom situation, and I don't want to get into his project because we're going to review that quickly, but that's a brand-new development um, in an existing space that's not developed. This one, I think, you know, it's really about seeing what is existing and what is, how the, the expansion is. And so I would expect, you know, Will could at least with some paint or with some tape or something, kind of show where the expansion is. Um, then, and then, you know, so I don't, I'm not sure it's really needed, Jeannie, in this case, but I, I appreciate that.
Okay.
Existing developed site, but I, I'd let the board comment on that. Anyone?
Everybody.
What's that?
Will, Will Gartley, what's your view on that?
I mean, to some extent, uh, Jeannie's right. I mean, if there was something that came up or that you wanted info on, I mean, that, that wouldn't give us very much time to respond if, if it was something we could respond to.
What about, does the morning of the 12th work instead of the 19th, going a week earlier? And just a first site review, I give you a week to make any changes?
I mean, that works, that works for us. I mean, we, we will have submitted by then, so you guys will have the packets.
So your submission, I think, is coming in on the 4th, so that gives, again, there's a nice bridge. Rosie, can we propose for the 12th? Might be a, a morning of the 12th?
Yes, was Jeannie going to say something?
I'm, I'm just going to let Will know that his email is showing and he may want to.
Oh.
There you go.
You're reading my email, Jeannie. Sorry.
I was just waiting for you to click open.
She's got eagle eyes. I didn't even notice. Okay, how does the 12th work at 9:00 AM, everybody on the board?
Well, that would be a good thing. I think it gives Will also, Will a chance to come around just in case.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay.
Ethan, does nine work for you or do you want nine thirty?
No, I can do nine easy on, on, you were talking about the 12th?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can do the 12th at nine.
All right.
Fantastic. Okay.
The plan moving forward, plan moving forward is a, a site walk on the 12th and content, public hearing, approval criteria on the 19th.
Fantastic.
That worked?
Beautiful.
So you need to set, vote to set the public hearing and you can vote to set the sidewalk if you want.
Sounds good.
Motion, Ethan?
Me?
Yeah, that's your job. That's why you're on the planning board. Come on.
Didn't you guys see me looking at the plans over here? Um, so let's see. Uh, I moved that we uh, have a site walk on the 12th of November at 9:00 AM for the Lyman Morse Site Plan Review Project. And, and do, am I supposed to include the meeting after that?
Separate.
Set the public hearing and site plan.
And set the public, and set the public hearing for site plan review on the following Thursday, the 19th of November.
I'll second that. Can I get um, votes for approval or not from the board? Raise your hands. We've got Jeff, I, Mark, I, I think I saw Matt down there. There was an I. I'm an I. So that's, that's unanimous. Is it four of us, five of us? How many are there? We're all in approval. Okay. Do we need to make a motion to close the meeting?
We do.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to um, close the meeting of the planning board for today. Do I have a second?
Second?
We have a second?
I said second.
All right, yes, Ethan. Okay, all those in favor on the board say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
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 Matt said yes. Jeff said yes. Marx, you, yes? Yes. All right. Thank you. So, thank you very much, gentlemen. Um.
Thank you.
We officially closed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody. We'll see you on the 12th.
Sounds great. Thanks. Yeah. All right. Bye-bye.
Thank you all.
All set, Jeremy?
Yeah, yes, ma'am.
Great. Thanks a lot. Thanks, guys. See you soon.
Thank you. Janice, are you here? Ethan is still here.
I thought we had more to do. We're not doing anything else?
Okay, I think you have to do this, Jeremy, because you're the host.
All right, I'm happy to leave. Take care.
Bye, Ethan.
You see at the top where it says live on YouTube?
Yep.
And there's a drop-down arrow?
Yep.